Call the meeting to order. The rule, if you would please, Michelle.
Evan.
Here.
Caleronia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Here.
North Dantville.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta. Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here. I'd like to ask your supervisor if you are attending this meeting. Please.
My question is to the flag of the United States of America and to your brother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We had the minutes from our last regular meeting, the 8th of March, for your consideration. Does anyone have any changes that they wish to summate at this time? During non-adjunct motion in second, please.
Lester.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor.
Aye.
Close. That's carried. We do have one communication, Michelle.
Local law four, 2023, was filed by the Department of State on March 7th, 2023.
Thank you. Next, we'll consider the claims against the penalty. Mr. Chairman, I move this abstracted claims and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions or discussion on this abstracted claims? During non-adjunct, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted.
Next, we have the legislative board. Mr. Chairman, I request President Deas for Marie Wheeler, United Way Campaign Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's been over a year now since the United Way Livingston County joined from counties of Genesee, Monroe, Ontario, Wayne, and Wyoming to create a powerful and aligned organization, the United Way Free Village Hospital and Pediatrics. With this merger, we have representative experience, in-depth understanding, and increased people power. So, speaking of people power, I'd like to introduce you to our new Community Relationship Manager, Mark Anthony Lucci.
Thank you all for having me today. 2023 begins the 27th year Livingston County has participated in the United Way Campaign. The United Way Campaign provides the foundation to make meaningful, lasting change. When you support United Way, your gift combines with others to provide basic needs, extend emergency services, advance education, economic mobility, and health solutions that make our community stronger. The power of one, but the need for many. This is a subject that our Executive Director, Jamie Saunders, has discussed in our staff meetings, and I thought it was perfect for today. As public servants, all seventeen of you, see the impact that you have on your constituents, communities, and counties. It could be a small talk at the grocery store, listening to the needs of an elderly grandmother taking care of grandchildren with legislation, and so much more. You are also in a position to know that you cannot do it alone and understand the importance of the need for many. This is true for our community-based organizations. We need the many. A sustainable solution will be found by working together to best support our friends, families, and neighbors by working together. Each of you has a sheet in front of you about the collective impact that's happened in 2022. You open your folder on the left-hand side, and you'll see it there. I encourage you to take a look and let me know if you see something that you haven't seen before or something new to you this year. As we enter 2023, we have a challenge for each of you, all seventeen of you here today. To show your support, we ask you to participate and have 100% participation in the United Way Livingston County Campaign for the United Way. As a leader in this community, your support will encourage other employees and community members to join in on our collective giving. I would like to thank you all for having me here today to kick off the Livingston County 2023 Campaign, but I would be remiss if I didn't specifically thank County Administrator Ian Coyle and Deputy Director of Economic Development, Maureen Wheeler, for not only leading with their heads, but also with their heart, helping their neighbors, community members, and families. I look forward to seeing you later in the year to report on your impact right here in Livingston County. Thank you so much.
So, this year's payroll deduction campaign will begin today, and it will run through the end of the month of April. County employees will be able to donate with ease through our online giving platform, which will be emailed out to all employees later this afternoon. Along with today's meeting, campaign coordinators will be at a table out in the hallway where we will have items that department heads can take back to their staff. We will have paper pledge forms out at the table. It's important to note that any county employee that does not have a county issued email address will not be able to give through the online platform, and they will have to use a paper pledge form. We also have some employees that prefer to donate this way. So, any department heads who need to bring paper pledge forms back to their department will have those out there at the table for you. They will also have a donor option list. This is a complete list of all the agencies that are funded throughout the six county regions, and there are codes for each, so you can designate where your gift goes. For quick reference, we have also created a one pager of the Livingston County entities from that booklet. So, if you prefer for your gift to stay here in Livingston County, you have a list of options. There's a general donor code to keep the money in Livingston County where it's most needed, or you can choose from charities of your choice. We also have out there at the table the incentives for giving. Anybody who donates $52,000, that's just $2 per pay period, will be entered into the incentive prizes. We have a variety of businesses throughout the county that have made donations of gift cards and products, so everybody who donates will be entered to win those bronze. And the sooner you donate, the more time you're going to be entered. You'll see all the details on that. And then lastly, we do have our dress down stickers. These are very popular. We've already raised over $2,000 this year selling dress down stickers. So, these can be priced $2 per sticker or $20 for a whole page. So, department heads, if you want to take any of these back to your department to sell, it's up to you to set the timeline to which your employees can utilize those. And then supervisors, you each have a labeled envelope in your folder there on your desk that you can use if you'd like to donate. As Mark mentioned, we would love to be able to announce 100% participation from the board to set an example for the workforce. So, whether it's through a payroll deduction or even through a one-time gift in any amount, your gift will really set an important example and support so many important causes throughout our community. So, last but certainly not least, I want to thank the campaign coordinators who donate their time and energy to the campaign each year. So, some of them are here with us today. I'd like to just ask them if we can donate at the front of the room, so they can put a face with the name. We have Sue Bagby, Office for the Aging, Andrea Bailey from the County Clerk's Office, Sue Karloff from Office for the Aging, Zach Cracknell from Highway, Megan Crowe from the Planning Department, Caitlin Gelscher from Human Resources, Kim Pattonoff from CNR, Gerald Lampy from the Department of Health, Allison McDaniel from Social Services, Amanda Schultz from the Sheriff's Office, Megan Sappalo from Records Management, and Josh Tonra from the District Patrons Office. We just want to thank them for all the work that they've put in. In addition to helping with the payroll deduction campaign, the coordinators are planning quarterly fundraisers, the first of which we actually just had last week. March month in Memphis brought in $150 towards the campaign. So, thank you for all the work on that. So, keep an eye out throughout the year. You'll see more campaigns like that, chicken barbecues, things along those lines that allow you, other than I'm just through which, to participate in the campaign. So, if you have any questions, if you need any campaign materials, you can contact any of the campaign coordinators. So, just close by reminding that if there's no gift too small, through the power of collective giving, we can achieve what no individual or organization can do. Thank you.
Do you have one resolution on the prepared agenda this afternoon?
Declaring surplus property highway.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? During non-adjunct, please, Michelle. Ms. Allen.
Lester, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia. Aye. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted.
Next, we have some resolutions that are going to require a separate call.
Mr. Mayor, amending the 2023 Livingston County budget. Central Services, there are two, Department of Health, there are two, and Sheriff's Office, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted. Authorizing and approving settlement agreements to an action related to the opioid crisis. CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? During non-adjunct, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted. Amending the 2023 Livingston County Salary Schedule. Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any discussion on this resolution? During non-adjunct, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2022-422, adopting the 2023 miscellaneous pay rates.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Mr. Mayor, is there any questions on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Tourism Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions or discussion on this contract?
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted. Awarding bid and authorizing construction contract for culvert replacement project, County Road 72, Presbyterian Road Culvert over Tributary to Keshua Creek, Town of Mount Morris, New York State DOT Pin 4B NY 243 L 040606 for the Livingston County Highway Department, CP Ward.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-three oh eight, absent seven forty-six, adopted. Requesting the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly to authorize Michael Teleska to take the Competitive Civil Service Examination and be placed on the eligible civil service list for employment as a full-time deputy for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office. This is a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-three fifteen, absent five sixty-nine, adopted. To the Livingston County Youth Board, Kelly Tonra, for the Town of Avon, serving at the Pleasure.
Thank you. Ian, do you have any updates for the board?
Yeah, a couple things, Chairman. Thank you. Just want to let you know, last week, we had a Chamber of Commerce event where it was like a legislative forum. We had participation from, I was there from the county to talk about what's going on in the county. We had Chris Seltman from Senator Schumer's office, and we had Pam Helming and Assemblywoman Burns. So, I did say at Ways and Means this week, it is, it's nice to know that we have the accessibility and communication that we have with all those offices to, you know, get in touch with them, to have them advocate for us on issues. So, they presented some updates as far as what's going on in Albany. The biggest thing for the counties, as you know, is this Medicaid, you know, theft swap, whatever you want to call it. $625 million a state is taking from county governments and placing back in the state coffers. So, it costs Livingston County about $1.25, $1.3 million this year if that were to take effect. So, the governor put it in her budget. The House bills that came out from the Senate Assembly removed that. So, that's, that's a very, very good thing, but hopefully that can stay that way. Because if it doesn't, it's a major, major hit for the counties. So, so that was a good meeting. It was good to see our representatives, and they indeed are working for us on our behalf. Let's see here. I have a conversations with the county tomorrow in York, so that's always, that's always interesting. So, looking forward to that. While we're not around the table of knowledge, we'll be at the town hall, so that'll be a fun time. The county strategic plan that we had a meeting on with the board in a work session a few weeks back, we're just putting the finishing touches on that. You should get that soon. We're obviously carrying out a lot of those endeavors while we wait on a finished document, but you'll see the finished document here shortly. I did restart those county government 101 talks at the high school, so, you know, some of your superintendents, they mentioned that. So, I was in Livonia last week. I only had two people fall asleep, and I had two students leave the room and just never come back. So, I don't know where they went. They left about 10 minutes into the talk and never came back. It was better than the kindergarten visit, though, when I got confused for the 80-year-old on the cover of the book that I was reading, because they said I looked like the grandpa who was gardening for egg in the classroom. So, the, the next one I have coming up is Dantville Friday, so I'll be down in Dantville. Really, it's introducing them to what's going on in the county government, period. You know, everything the county does that they may sort of see in their lives every day when they go out and about, but for the upperclassmen, if you will, the seniors, it's also about, you know, I end the talk with what do they want to do when they get out of school? And so, you know, in each of those answers, I try to relate it in some capacity to, you know, work at the county. So, the other day, somebody wanted to be a welder. I was talking about the opportunities of the Highway Department, wanted to be a police officer, talking about the Sheriff's Office. One of the kids wanted to be a cannabis farmer, so I had to kind of pivot away from that one and answer. But, almost like, seriously, like, seven out of eight kids that were going to talk, you know, that, interestingly enough, have relating to nursing. One wanted to be an art therapist. I said, oh, what's art therapy? How's that relate to the county? Well, we got mental health clinicians who have art therapy as a background. So, like, almost every single person's response related in some way to the opportunities that might be available here at the county government. So, I'll be doing those throughout the next couple of months. And then the last thing, the opioid settlement that's on here, just so you, just so you know, we're up to about $1 million or so in terms of opioid settlements. Some of those are like 20 grand for the next 10 years. Some of those are upfront, $80,000, one or one time or over three years. So, it depends on what, you know, what we're getting, who we're getting it from, and how it's provided to us, sometimes one time, sometimes over many years. But, there's a lot of that money flowing. It's got to be spent for some specific purposes, so we are sort of strategizing internally as far as what we can and should spend that money on, and then we'll report back to the board on, you know, some suggested uses. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. I have one other, myself, under other business. We do have a department head attending their last board meeting this afternoon. Becky is going to retire, Becky Schroeder, March 30th, and service to the county, for service to the residents and constituents here in Livingston County. The ability to vote, the freedom that we have, is so important, and the state has changed the election laws, and they committed a change in, you know, protecting our rights to vote. And Becky's time with us, we've initiated early voting and several other changes. I've never had any doubt in my mind that the residents of Livingston County have always been able to vote in accuracy from both Dave Pusoli and Becky Schroder. The accuracy, the ability of everybody to vote and be done fair and equitably, personally, it's never been any concern of mine. We hear a lot of talk about, you know, possible voter fraud and that, but I, my confidence always 100% here in Livingston County that everything is done the way it should be and fairly and equitably, and I know that'll continue here stepping in to take over for Becky. But, on behalf of the board and other department heads, all the residents of Livingston County, we'd like to thank Becky for her years of service to Livingston County. Thank you very much, Becky.
Here to say, thank you, Mark. You know, I really don't care to say this.
Yeah, looks like it.
And I think what I really need to do is take advantage of being up here without David. Very often, I hope it ever happens, when I talk, that I could talk without having my Democratic congressman next to me. This, this has I don't like speaking in front of a group, but I'd like less pride in front of a group. So, I do have to say, just very briefly, that it has been an honor to be a part of the county government. This is my, kind of my end of career job. I appreciate the fact that David has offered me a working job, and I have a soft boot to tap me, but I don't see any of those in my future. But, I just want to say that, again, it has been an honor and a privilege, and thank you to all of you folks out there. David can attest that you're at a lot of these commissioner meetings and conferences, and people complain very much about, oh, the legislature, the board directors, everybody, that they don't have any issues. And all I can say is I liken that to my mother-in-law. People would cry about their mother-in-law, and I would say, I got nothing. She's perfect. She's wonderful. And I would say that all about you guys, too. Thank you.
For any other residents to come before the board to say a Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a collective negotiation pursuant to Article 24 Civil Service Law Circuit.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pringrazia, who would you like to stay in?
I'd like to have Shannon stay in here, please. Very good.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Oh, yeah, no offense.
...